What is going on everybody? Poker Dad here. We are live with no delay. I'm just gonna be doing a study session. I haven't done one of these study sessions in quite a while here. I actually just in the last, I got home, I got home like less than about 50 minutes ago and had dinner and created a quick, created a quick overlay for this. Just have more, more room here for you guys to be able to see my screen. Anyway, I'm just gonna be pulling up a tournament that I played yesterday. I played five tournaments yesterday. So I'm gonna pull up one of the tournaments I played yesterday and just do a quick review of one of the tournaments and just take me look at some of the things that I've learned from my Poker Nerve course. And just obviously I want to look and see what kind of mistakes I made, what kind of good plays I made. Just go through one of the, one of the tournaments and if I have time maybe two, but I can only go for about an hour. Till about eight o'clock tonight. So anyway, hope you guys are doing great and yeah, I think we should be good to go. But everything, I hope I remember to put everything here on the overlay. I'm pretty sure I did. I pretty much copied all my last overlay and then just adjusted it a little bit. As you can see, I have a much bigger, much bigger chat box and stuff. Anyway, um, I think let's find something that has like a good number of hands. This one has 184 hands. This was one of the deep stack ones. It's 167 hands. And I'll adjust the screens. Make sure you guys are able to see everything. This one has 165 hands. Um, this one was the, oh, this is, this one's an interesting one. This one was the one that, this was a six max re-buy. Let's do the full ring. Let's do the, this is, this was the deep stack one that we bust out of right before late reg was over. It's a deep stack tournament. I think this one could be a good one to go over. I'd rather do this one. I don't know. Let's see. Let's go with, let me go with the six max. Six max is also kind of, kind of easier as well to, to review and I like the six max better anyway. So if we have time, we'll do both, but we'll see what happens. Obviously it's gonna be a lot of hands that we're not even gonna be looking at. Alright, so let me pull this up here. Replay, replay all hands and report. And make it big enough for you guys. Let's get rid of that. Let's make this bigger. But alright, this is perfect. Fits the entire thing on screen. Perfect, perfect for you guys to see. We have a heart as you can see here. And we have the first hand here, I think. Is this, let me just make sure. Uh, nope. Wrong way. Now let's do it. Bam. There you go. So wow. I saw this tournament with pocket aces. Oh, you know, we, we actually, oh yeah, I remember. We actually, I late regged into this. So I actually late regged into this. A few minutes late because I had just busted out of a tournament. So I had actually late regged into this one here, which is why some of the stacks are a little bit differently. This was a re-buy tournament as well. Um, so that'll come into play because I did put it, add in some rebis into this tournament as well. Which actually I'm reevaluating if I'm gonna be, if I really want to do rebis that way or just play with the stack that we're given at the start of the tournament and, and work with it from there. Now that I have a better idea of the strategies for the different stack sizes. Um, so anyway, obviously the first hand here obviously was aces, which should be pretty easy for me to play here. As you can see also I'm masking the, the villain names here on BetOnline. We don't want to be, you know, I don't want to show anybody's names here in this study session. We're not here to evaluate players as much as we are just to evaluate each, each hand that we play. Um, so anyway, obviously I'll be opening up the aces here. I, I opened up 2.5X at this stage of the tournament. Uh, when it's 5100, which actually this tournament, this is the first level of the tournament is 5100 here. So we open up 2.5X and we just take it down. So unfortunately we got aces to start the tournament and we don't get any play with them. Uh, here we have queen eight offsuit here from the under the gun, which of course is gonna be an easy fold here. And queen four should be the same thing, although we are in the big blind here. Uh, but we get an open, we get isolation here from the cutoff. So queen four is obviously an easy fold. Here we have king ten suited. Uh, so definitely this is a hand we want to open up here from the small blind. Make it 250. And we get a fold. Am I gonna, uh, as you, as you guys know, if you guys watch the screen, what's going on there? Google no agenda? Uh, no, I don't want to filter for VPip hands because I want to go through all the hands and see which hands unfolding as well. Uh, so I want to see if there's some hands that I, that I actually shouldn't be folding, uh, which is why I'm not filtering. So I just want to go through the entire, the entire tournament. Um, so here we have king four suited. So by the way, as you guys know, I like to look at things using M, um, which is the way that the course trains us. And again, I've, I believe that M is the, the best way of doing it. In fact, I'll throw my command here in case you're not sure what M is. This is the explanation of what M is. So anyway. Uh, false was here. So king four suited is a hand that we are definitely opening up here. M is deep stacked by the way, so anything above M20 is a large, on the larger side. Um, as you can see, if you're more familiar with BB, it's 52 BBs in this case here. Uh, so definitely gonna be opening this up to, to 250 and we'll just take it down. Uh, so king seven offsuit here. Now I'm not gonna be showing my ranges. I actually do have to put these ranges into Flopzilla. But I'm not gonna show them on the, on the screen just because of the fact that this comes with the course. I think actually the, they actually, they might, these ranges actually might be available for free actually. Um, if you go to, if you just take, take a look, if you go to pokernerve.com, P-O-K-E-R-N-E-R-V-E.com and go to course access, even if you're not signed up for the course, you might be able to get the ranges for free. I'm not 100% sure though. Um, but obviously I do really like that, these ranges. They have them set up and you can take a look at them in BB or you can take a look at them in, in M. Anyway, a hand like this one here, king seven offsuit would actually would be a fold from the cutoff. Now here we have ace eight offsuit here, which looking at my ranges here is a fold as well when we are deep stack. Eight six offsuit here, again definitely gonna be a fold from under the gun. So we still have this tournament pretty card dead. Uh, eight four here. Obviously we would not be calling. All these opens, a hand like 10 seven. Um, so let me take a look here. So I can handle like 10 seven offsuit. This hand here, if in the small blind, if it folded to us here, we would definitely be opening it. So let's see, we don't get the opportunity obviously. Ace eight here, definitely a hand that we would open. So we're at the 6120 blind level. So this is like one of those spots, I think it's okay just to like 2X open at this point here. Um, I did 2.5X. I think 2.5X is fine too. I think either way, either one is fine. I think the, the blind level after this is when I really start to just 2X open. Uh, but I think this is fine here. Uh, 2.5X open still at this blind level. And we just take it down. So so far we haven't had any post-flop action. 10 three, of course, we know we're not gonna be playing. Uh, 10 eight, we're not gonna be playing here. Uh, here in the big blind with ace nine offsuit. Uh, it looks like we get just a shove here. This guy's an M15, so he's shoving pretty, pretty deep here. Uh, this isn't a play that we would ever do, um, but this player has decided to do it and see what he did it with. Are we gonna find out? We won't. Four seven of course, uh, in the small blind, four seven offsuit. Even if it folds to us here, seven four offsuit, we would not be opening it. And king eight offsuit definitely is a hand we would open. Uh, but when we get open here, obviously king eight offsuit should be a fold and we do. Uh, nine five suited here from the cutoff is definitely going to be a fold. 10 five, four seven. Uh, here we got moved to a, I hate these spots on BetOnline. So we got moved, we got moved to a new table over here and it's always annoying. Um, because then all of a sudden we get thrown into this heads up spot, which is just really annoying. So let's see, we just limp behind here. And obviously we didn't have any hearts on this board. Uh, we check here and our opponent bets and it's just an easy fold of course. So we play, we play one hand heads up and then everybody else is here hanging out with us. 10 five suited in the small blind. So this is interesting. Let's see, we're at the 8160 level. So this is a spot, obviously we definitely do want to open up here and I guess I'm still opening up 2.5X. Uh, yeah, okay. So I did still open up, right? 2.5X, 160 times. Yeah, it's 400. Okay. I don't know. I mean, I think I'm okay at this point, just opening up 2X. I think this is too big of an open at this stage now. Uh, but we take it down. But we could also open up bigger for like, I, I guess this is one strategy obviously I haven't gotten to yet in the program. But I think maybe even from the small blind, we could open up like 2.5X from the small blind because we are trying to steal. Um, as opposed to, uh, 2X. I don't know. I think it's kind of interesting. Uh, here ace six suited. So we get opened from the, uh, this is actually a limp. So this is one of those interesting spots that I haven't gone over yet is, is isolating here. Um, I decide just to over limp here. Now this particular player, we only have 29 hands on him. So we really don't have any kind of real gauge on him. We just can see his tight passive so far. But that really means nothing because 29 hands, he could be completely card dead for all we know. Um, so this is a spot here. I'm just not really sure how to play it. Because we don't want to, we don't want to fold ace six suited. We could be aggressive and isolate here. I mean, now here's the one thing, we have an M of 16. So that's another thing is now we have kind of like a, like in the mid, like somewhere in the middle with 33 big blinds. Um, so this is by, I just honestly, I just don't know how to play it. So I just over, I just over limped it. But obviously there's a lot of merit. We're gonna be in position if we isolate, even if we get a call, we're gonna be in position and we're gonna have the initiative. And I think that's like one of the, one of the, one of the advantages here of isolating is because we're going to be in position here. And then we have the initiative. So we're gonna be able to c-bet a lot of boards. Um, and be able to take down the pot where now when we just over limp, we have no initiative. Sure, we have position, uh, but obviously initiative is a huge deal in poker. So we'd have position and we'd have initiative, which means we could take down more pots. Plus we, if we isolate here, well, this guy could end up folding here. Uh, he's, so far we think maybe he's high passive. Um, we take down the blinds, we take down the antis and we take down a decent pot instead of playing this passively here where like unless we flop a flush draw here, like we're never really happy, right? Because, because if an ace comes out on the board, somebody could have a seven, ace eight, ace nine maybe. Um, like we see a flush draw, you know, then we possibly have to start bluffing. But yet if we isolate, we could do so much more and possibly also be heads up as opposed to what's gonna end up happening, I'm sure, is the small blind is gonna call. And the, and the big blind will call. Or worst case scenario, which is gonna really suck, is a small blind decides to isolate himself and then we're gonna be forced to fold our hand, which I think makes it even worse. Uh, small blind does call. So we go four ways and obviously this flop is nothing. Now again, if we isolate here, we could, we could definitely c-bet this flop and take down the pot. Now we've basically just thrown, you know, one big blind in and we're gonna have to lose it. Because there's no way we're bluffing in a four-way pot. Like that's just a complete recipe for disaster. And look, 10 four calls. So 10 four calls in the, in the small blind, nine eight, you know, maybe nine eight folds in the big blinds who are isolation bet. 10 four is definitely folding and then we, and obviously we would have knocked this guy out. So we could have won a pot right there. Instead, we played it passively and here we are, we did nothing. Pretty bad. So I think just with that, even, even though I haven't even gone over into the course, you know, just from like, just from cash games, like cash games, I, I would never, I would never, first of all, I don't over limp in cash games ever. Um, you could over limp in, in tournaments. Um, in a cash game, I would 100% every single time be isolating ace six suited, uh, from the button. So I don't think that's really, should be any different here. Uh, ace two suited here. Um, we would definitely not be opening up. It's actually funny, the ranges say we can open up ace two. So now, now these ranges actually, um, he created these ranges using a mix of moncasalver and, and pile. Um, there's a small percentage of the time we would open up ace two offsuit here. And I think the time we would open up ace two offsuit here is if we have a read on our opponents that, that our opponents in front of us are tight, that we could actually try and steal the hand like ace two offsuit from the cutoff. Uh, but clearly, I mean, here we got a guy who's very loose through 82 hands. He's got a VPip of 39. Um, the blinds are, the blinds are a little bit on the tighter side, uh, but getting past this guy in a button could be very difficult. So either way, we have an open here, but it's just good to even just think about the situation if this guy didn't open. Obviously we're folding this up of course. Yeah, it's, it's definitely interesting and I'm, I'm curious. There is, there is a lesson on isolating in the course. So I'm very interested to, when I do get to that, um, when I do get to the isolation. Um, so it's, it's definitely, it's definitely interesting. You know, I, I don't know. I guess I, I will definitely find out. I will definitely find out. But we can't fold it, you know, we definitely have to at least over limp it at the minimum. But I've been watching also, he's, um, in my module now, he's doing a session review. And the only time I've seen him over limp so far is with speculative hands deep in the small blind. So. Uh, nine two, of course, we're definitely not playing this here. Eight four, 10 four. Uh, well, actually let's check eight four because eight four, we're in the big blinds. Uh, we just take it down. Alright, that's nice. Always nice to get a walk. Uh, ace five offsuit here in the button. So this false was here. So we're definitely gonna be opening. Kind of interesting that here I just 2Xed it. That I just, instead of 2.5X, it's kind of like I changed my mind. Now I remember yesterday when I was playing this, this table, this was, um, I threw this table up. I had two tables going on. I was getting kind of overwhelmed at the time with having three tables up. Um, and managing chat as well. Um, so that's why it's, it's definitely an interesting tournament to look at because my attention wasn't fully on this tournament for quite a while. Um, and this is also like a, just like a really long tournament because it's three hours of late reg. Uh, anyway, ace five offsuit here, definitely we're, we're opening it here. Uh, just take a look at our opponents in front of us. By the way, we have an M of 15. By the way, we want to keep an eye on that as well. But obviously in M of 15, we're opening up here, trying to steal some blinds. Uh, again, we have an opponent here who just doesn't really seem to want to fold. He's a loose passive player. Um, and we have a tighter opponent here who does like to fold. Uh, we do get a fold though, which is good. And we do get a call here from the big blind. So we do see a flop and this is a really interesting flop because obviously it's gonna connect, connect a lot more with the big blinds range. That being said, I think we need to bet here. I think we need to bet here for protection. Um, just against obviously if this guy has a hand like maybe, you know, king, like a hand like with a king, maybe he's got like a king jack hand, king 10 hand that he's calling in the big blind, um, or anything like that, any kind of queen, you know, obviously queen nine, it would be good beer, but queen 10, something like that. Um, you know, which would be a guts. I guess in queen 10 would call, king jack, king jack, the hand like king jack would fold. Um, you know, I don't think we're gonna get too many, the thing is, I don't think we're gonna get too many folds here. But I think we also need to bet our pair in position as well, um, and just c-bet here. Cause I think we want to definitely be c-betting all of our pairs here. Um, and I do c-bet and he calls. Like I said, I don't think we're gonna get a ton of calls here. Now we could definitely get an ace here and improve our hand. Uh, two comes out, which is not an improvement at all. And now I think at this point, well, well now that he donk bets on us, I mean, this is obviously an easy, an easy fold. Um, the donk bet is just so weird here, this lead. Now I'm gonna actually be learning about this because this isn't 100% incorrect to do this. Um, but I think it's definitely more value based. This is something I'm gonna learn about apparently. Uh, based on what he's mentioned in the video so far. Uh, but apparently this is not 100% incorrect to do something like this. That being said, obviously with third pair here, this is gonna, it's gonna be an easy fold with our five. You know, what, what he's doing this with, I can't imagine unless, like I really can't imagine what he could possibly be doing this with. Um, unless he, I mean, like we see, like we c-bet, is he calling a pair of twos here to have a set? I highly doubt it, right? Yeah, it definitely hits his range well, but we have to bet there. Like we, we have to c-bet there with a pair. We can't not. Um, and we, and we, yeah, we're not gonna get a lot of folds. We're gonna get, but we're gonna get folds from like over cards mostly, but not a ton of, not, not a ton of hands. Uh, but we're gonna, we are gonna, we're gonna, I guess fold out. I don't know. It's, it's definitely just a weird, weird spot. We don't love c-betting there, but like we really should c-bet there. We really should be c-betting all of our pairs there. Uh, because in position, we really want to c-bet about 70% and that's gonna include all of our pairs. Um, you know, we can, we can check back, maybe it's like some weak top pair, but even here like nines, we're never checking back any nine that we have. Uh, maybe if you have like as ace on the board and we have like a weaker ace that we, you know, we can check back and protect our checking range, things like that. Uh, but either way, obviously here he's leading out. It's for strength. I highly doubted, I highly doubt it's a bluff. Um, and either way, our hand is not, is not strong enough to call. So we have to fold it up. Uh, four three, of course, we won't be playing that. Uh, queen 10 here from the middle position. Uh, fold. So let me just check my ranges here. Uh, queen 10 offsuit is going to be an open here. Um, actually I'm sorry, because we're at M13, which now our stack is getting a little bit short. Uh, queen 10 offsuit is optional. We can, we can open it or fold it. I think again, it just depends on who we got in front of us. Now again, we have a loose passive player in front of us. We got a couple of tighter players. Um, but the loose passive player makes it really kind of difficult to open up a hand like king 10 offsuit. So I think we should fold this here and I do. Ace three suited here in the, uh, under the gun is going to be an open at this stack size. Really actually we're opening up like in a six max, we're opening up our suit of aces from every position. Uh, it's a little bit different in a full ring, but in a six max, we're opening up under the gun, uh, from every position, the suited ace. So as we open this up here, we open it up 2X, get a call from the button. And we go heads up at a position. Now this is a situation, I, I just spoke about how, how we want to be betting our small pairs. It's different out of position. This is not a board, this is not a spot that we want to c-bet here. Um, because we're never getting called by, like maybe we're getting called by a flush draw, but even still, three is just a hand that, a pair of threes that we just don't want to bet here. We just want to go check, check and we could even give up. We're at a position, it's gonna be a difficult hand the entire way if we start betting, um, our small pairs here. So this is a spot we definitely want to check. I bet, I don't like this bet at all. Yeah, I really don't like this bet. We gotta fold. We take it down, but I don't like the bet at all. Uh, pocket tens here. Get a open here from. Yeah, I, I, you know what? It's just like from the training that I've done. I could be, like, I could be wrong. Well, I mean, let's see. I mean, he's calling, he's gonna call some flush draws. He's, you know, maybe he's got like hand like, um, I mean some ace six suited that he might have. Um, ace jack could call here. Some jacks he could definitely have as well. Yeah, it, I, I don't know. See, the problem is, is that if we bet here and he calls, like we have to completely shut it down. It's a spot I'd just much rather be in position with a hand like this. Now if I have a back, now if I have like a backdoor flush draw or a flush draw, I think it's a different situation. But just with the three, without any real room for improvement except for a two pair, I'd rather go check, check here and then even if I want to, I can delay c-bet this on the turn. Um, but I think, you know, but, but I think on the flop here, I'd rather see it go check, check and then possibly delay c-bet on the turn. Maybe improve, get two pair and then get paid, you know, get paid off by an ace or something like that. But even though, you know, that, then that's even a little bit scary too. Uh, we've seen two pairs get busted by better two pairs. I don't know. I just think, um, I just don't think it's the right place to bet out of position here with such a low pair. I could be wrong. Uh, so pocket tens here. Uh, so we get an open here from the high jack. Middle position. Uh, get a call here from the, from the button. So this is I think a pretty clear squeeze here. We got a squeeze. Um, so this is something I gotta, I'm gonna start looking at is my bet sizing in these spots. Betting like three, uh, we have a, what's this? Wait, hang on. We have an M of 15. Um, yeah, so M of 15 here, we actually can squeeze. We don't have to jam here. Um, we can actually do a three bet here and do like a smaller three bet. So normally at a position, we would bet like 4X. Uh, we can bet three bet here like 3.5X. So if I bet 160 times, say, uh, a 500 and, uh, $560 chip, whatever the hell you want to call it. Um, three bet here. Uh, no, I'm sorry. 400, sorry, 400 times, uh, 3.5. So 1400. And squeeze with 1400 here. This guy's an M21. This guy's an M12. It's gonna put a lot of pressure on him. He's gonna probably have to fold here. Um, this guy's a 21 eight, but still I think we definitely need the three bet, even though this guy is a little bit on the tighter side when opening up. Um, we don't want to call and play tens, um, at a position multi-way. It's just not gonna be the right place. We need to definitely squeeze here. So, uh, yeah, open this up for about 1400 for a squeeze. Uh, I do 1600. So this is something I'll be working on with bet sizing. I'm gonna be bet sizing 3.5X here going forward. What's up there night bot? Um, uh, we do get a fold from this guy and this guy should really fold as well. He's, he hasn't, he has an M of 12. I mean, he's gonna be in position, but he should probably fold here. So he, this is interesting. So this is a weird spot, right? Because So he, this is interesting. So this is a weird spot, right, because this guy, this guy called the middle position open, right? He didn't three bet the middle position open, he called it. But now he's shoving our squeeze, like, what the hell is that? Um. What the hell, what, what kind of hands is calling an, a, a middle position open and then shoving to my squeeze? Like, is that just like the nuts or something? I don't know. I mean, obviously, we can't fold, right? We getting 27% to call, and like, if I just open up Equilab here. Uh, actually, I could do it over here. I don't have to bring it to the screen because I have, I have two screens set up. Bam, there it is, Equilab. Um. So let's see, if I throw in 10/10. Maybe he was trying to trap. So we'll keep like, all the nutted hands in his range. But we'll give him like these other pocket pairs too that might do this. Maybe he feels like committed, and he's like, oh, well, I can't call, I don't want to fold, so I'm just going to shove. I mean, maybe he's going to do this with, oh, this guy's a 13/14 through 67 hands, pretty tight. I mean, even if I give him a ra, if I give him a range like this, I don't know. I mean, obviously, we got 58% equity, I mean, what, what if I just gave him like the, just the nutted hands, right, let's say he's just trapping, right? Let's give him the good, just the good stuff, right, we just give him this. We still got 35%, so we got a call, like, we can't fold because of the pot odds that we're getting, we can't, we can't fold, so. We call, of course. Let's see what he had. It's a pretty bad board. Not a good board here. He did it with king, queen, he did it with king, queen suited, interesting. It's interesting, interesting, interesting play. I don't think I like it. It's definitely, I don't think it's a very good play. Um. Yeah, I don't know, what, what do you, what do you think about, what do you think about what he did, just shoving the king, queen suited there? Um, calling and then shoving the king, queen suited when I, when I squeezed there. Like, he's behind a lot of stuff that I would call with. I really don't think this is a great shove at all. I think you got to let this, I think when I, like, when you just call middle position, and then I squeeze here, I think you got to fold this up. So, obviously, kind of sucked, but it is what it is. Uh, jack five here, just minimize this here. Uh, so jack five falls to us here, jack five suited, we're definitely going to open it up. Okay, so this right here, okay, we had an, we had an M of three. Now, something else unfortunately I cannot share with you, but I can't, but I can talk about it, is the poker nerve program uses this thing called power numbers, which is a pretty awesome way to, um, an awesome chart, um, to evaluate if you should be shoving or not. So a hand like this, jack five suited, uh, with an M of three, seven big blinds, uh, jack five suited, make sure I did the right thing here. Yeah, is a, is a clear shove here, blind versus blind. With us being short, and we take it down. So pocket twos here, again, we're still short, we have an M of three. And again, pocket twos here is a clear shove. Ah, alright, this was a misclick? I remember this, and that, this got me kind of like, I was really annoyed about this because this, this was a misclick. So obviously, we should be shoving here, and it was a terrible misclick, and, I mean, do we need to evaluate this hand? At this point, I was just so pissed off because I was trying to like top up too, and I couldn't top up or something, and I, I couldn't top up when I wanted to top up. And I was definitely a little frustrated, and I was definitely very flustered at this point, and then I misclicked it too, is when it should have been a shove. Uh, here we have jack ten here in the, uh, in the cutoff, and obviously now we, our, our stack is even smaller here, we have an M of two. Uh, so again, this is a clear shove. I mean, we have no fold equity here at this point. We're getting called by whatever. And we call, we, we got called by, we got called by ace five and actually took it down. Hey, we're, we're stacking up now, we're stacking, we're not dead yet, we're not dead yet. Come on, baby. Fight, baby, fight. Uh, ace six, ace six here, now we have an M of five again. Uh, ace six, of course, would definitely be folding. And here's ace king. Uh, I think we're definitely going to be going all in with the ace king here, M of five, 11 big blinds. Uh, we get an open limp here from our loose passive player. And I mean, clearly, obviously, we're just jamming here, and he folds it up. Seven three, we know we're not going to be playing that. Eight three suited, uh, eight three suited here would definitely be a fold. Six three, ten five. Uh, eight six. Uh, here we have king two suited in the big blind. Um, I think we should definitely be folding this here, we have an, we have M6 now, which I guess is because we're in the big blind. Um, I don't know what the hell I'm doing here. What is this? Why, why, this is terrible. I don't know why I'm calling, um, why I'm calling, this is terrible. I'm, I'm really short right now, I have an M of six, I should not be calling king two suited here. Um, this guy here, um, 67 hands we have, and he's really not stealing at all. Um, so I don't think a jam would be good here, I think we just fold up our king two suited really short, I don't know why I did, I don't know why I played it this way. And then I, then I got a king, to make things, to make matters worse, you know, so now we're going to be, like, we can't go anywhere now. Goes check, check. I mean, when it goes check, check now, I mean, I think at this point, I just got to jam, I mean, what else am I going to do now? Um, just jam to take down, to take down the pot, and maybe he calls me with a, with like a pair of sevens, maybe he calls me with a queen, a 10? And I do jam, thank goodness. He calls. Oh, god. See? This is what I'm talking about. The guy, I know it's only 67 hands, but VPip and PFR are, for the most part, especially playing six max here, uh, 67 hands is pretty, VPip and PFR are the stats that, um, are the, are true, the most true quickest, that sounds like terrible English. I don't know the way, come on, I'm not, I'm no English major, alright, we're playing poker. This guy's not stealing. He's a pretty tight player. His king two is terrible. Either I'm jamming or folding there, and probably versus a player like this, we just got to fold in the big blind, and there you go, see, we got in trouble, and, uh, we lost our stack. But hey, I added, I, I, I rebought, I rebought for, uh, for two times my buy-in. So I think going forward, I'm not going to be, basically what I'm going to do in these rebuy tournaments on BetOnline is not rebuy at the start of the tournament. Uh, play my stack, try and, try and build up my stack from the starting stack, um, and then when I do rebuy, I, I will double rebuy. Um, but I think like my problem was, I was rebuying at the start, then double rebuying, then adding on, and before you know it, I've like lost, if I, I don't even cash a tournament, I've lost like five times my buy-in, and, uh, let's just say that, uh, I had a decent bankroll on BetOnline, and I've watched it really dwindled due to all these rebuys and that I got kind of out of control with. Anyway, we got seven two, uh, here, obviously will be a fold. So we are deep though, again, we have M25. M25 is, is decent, it's good. Want anything above M20 is deep. Pocket nines here. M of 23 now, I guess the blind just went up. Uh, obviously, we're opening up here, uh, make it 400. And we'll take it down. Jack three, uh, we are in the, uh, under the gun, so we're going to fold that, of course, nine three suited in the big blind, easy fold. Five two in a, uh, small blind, we can fold, jack ten offsuit here in the button. Uh, definitely going to be opening this up here, uh, we're at 125, 250 blinds now. We have an M of 19, so we're getting into that middle type area now, middle stack type area, which I just studied last night. We get a call from the small blind, uh, this is that loose passive player. Um. The small blind calling range is interesting, just to give you guys a heads up, I'll give you a little sneak peek of what, of what, um, this guy has an M of nine, so he's pretty short. He's pretty short to be ever calling in a small blind, but just to give you guys an idea of what this range might look like versus the button. Well, actually, I can't even tell you that because there should be no calling range here. So what could he be calling with? Well, he shouldn't have a calling range here. I don't even have a sample calling range because there should not be a calling range here. He should definitely be free bet shoving all the time or folding here. So, I mean, I assume a player like this, I mean, how many hands do we have on him? 82, not a ton. So positional, positional stats are just not going to be accurate. Um, I don't know. Pocket pairs, suited, I don't know what he's, like, because he shouldn't be doing much of anything here. So, he's an unpredictable player, he's a loose passive player, he's playing 39% of his hands. I mean, what does 39% of your hands look like? Well, 39% looks like this. Maybe add, maybe add some more of this stuff, get rid of this, get rid of this stuff up here, add more of these like suits, maybe he's playing a bunch of these suited queens, suited jacks, he's playing hands like that. You know, stuff like this, bam, bam, get rid of all this stuff here, that maybe he would actually play aggressively. You know? And you got what here? 38%. So, yeah. Why not? Throw those in too. So that's what this guy's playing, that, this, this is the range this guy is playing. So it's, it's really hard having a guy like this on your left, it's really very frustrating having a guy like this like in your left. And I know last night I was getting frustrated because all my tables, I seem to have these like loose passive players in front of me. Uh, we get a call from the big blind as well, which is kind of typical here, I mean, the small blind comes along, big blind is going to come along a lot too, because now he's getting amazing odds to call. Uh, we get top pair, which is great in position. This guy leads out. So this is a spot, right, we have a loose passive player dunk betting. This should be alarming to me. Not only that, but he's betting two thirds pot, he's not even betting half fives, I'm not underbetting, betting two thirds pot, this should be pretty alarming here. Um. The, the problem is that we can't fold, but I mean, like, what is, like, what is he leading out with here? Generally, dunk bets are very weak bets, in cash games, they're very weak bets, I'm finding that in the tournaments, they're not as weak. So, I mean, what does he have here? Possibly two pair, sets, some kind of a jack? Is he doing this with a flush draw? I don't really think he's doing this with a flush draw. He could, maybe if he has like an ace high flush draw that he, that he called, is quite possible. What do we do here? I do call it here. Alright, let's just do, that's what I'm going to do, alright? We're going to go over to Flopzilla real quick. I'm going to put Flopzilla up on the other screen. Uh, let's just take a quick look here and just kind of figure this out. These, this, oops, that's not where we want to be, there we go. Uh, alright, perfect, beautiful, alright. Let's try and figure this out here. Let's go grab that range that we just gave him. His crazy range. Uh, will give us our jack of hearts and ten of spades. And the board here is jack of diamonds. Six clubs and five clubs. Going in there, Waka? I used to do it all the time, you know, and then I stopped doing it because I didn't have time on Mondays, but I have some time tonight to play around, so I'm going to put this video up on YouTube as well. I will do it in a, uh, I'll post up in a couple of days on YouTube. Uh, alright, so what is this guy, what the hell is this guy dunk betting with, right? So we've got sets here, could be doing it. Uh, two pairs, has all these jacks here, he's got a ton of jacks in his range that we gave him. Because again, he's super loose passive, 39% VPip. Uh, pocket pair below top pair, he could be betting with this stuff, he could absolutely be betting with this stuff, I think he's see, I think he's betting here with a pretty big range. Uh, the middle pairs, like, if he's just betting, like, let's say he's betting all these pairs, right? Um. I don't think he's really betting flush draws, except maybe like the nuttish ones maybe, I don't know, this is such a weird spot. I mean, if we just say, I guess, this is just such a weird spot, I mean, let's just say maybe he's doing this. I don't even know. Uh, let's filter it. Let's just for the fun of it, let's just say he's doing it with like his, his ace high flush draws, I guess. I don't know. God knows what this guy's doing. Only god knows what this guy's doing, right? Alright, uh, always, I don't think he's doing this always, with, with any of these, always these gut shots or anything like that, right? So this is the range, we're going to, we're going to give him, we're going to give him this range. I don't, like, we're, we're, we are completely guessing here. Um, but just from what I've seen, just from the population, in tournaments, it can mean like a lot of things, so we'll just give him the things that we feel like he could be doing this with. And then we'll just, we'll try and narrow it, we'll try and narrow it down, we'll try and narrow it down. Um, but obviously, we have to call here, obviously, with, with, uh, with top pair, we have 62% equity, we're not going anywhere yet. Proceed with caution. Well, if he was doing this with flush draws, we're really not happy now, are we, because, uh, he has an ace of clubs, a, a eight of clubs comes out. Also, the weird, also the other weird thing about this hand, again, is the fact that he calls in the small blind, he should never be calling in the small blind. He should only be, he should only be three bet shoving in the small blind, given his stack size here, he has an M of nine, uh, at the beginning of the hand, then he donks as well. So it makes it just a really hard spot here because of the fact he's so short. I mean, if we look back at just the, at the flop here, just from an SPR standpoint, it's a 2.6 SPR. This is a really, really hard pot to get, hard pot to get away from, especially when we have top pair. I mean, do we, do we jam versus him here, considering like we really should be committed versus his stack with top pair? I mean, I don't think that, that feels like that doesn't make much sense to do that, does it? Um. I mean, like, the thing is, like, if we, if we jam here, and he's got, top pair a better, he has 37, 41, 42, 42% of his range. So even you can see here, ra, alright, range is best 22% of the time, so like, we're, we're ahead of him a ton here. Almost makes me feel like actually just, just jam, like, considering it's a 2.6 SPR pot, especially once, once big blind gets out of the way. Maybe jamming is the right play here with, with top pair, and if he calls this with better, he calls with better, but he has so, he has so much worse in his range that he still might call here? I, I don't think it's going to be the worst thing to do here to just, to just jam here. And just play this aggressively, I mean, we were, we were the pre-flop razor. He's got such a huge range. Might not be the worst idea, because if he is doing this with a flush draw, you know, always doing this with like these, these pairs as well, this eight comes out, it's, it just makes it so hard for us to continue now, so hard for us to continue here. And now he, and, and now he jams. So if he had, so if he was on a flush draw, which he may call, we don't know, we have no idea. This player is so unpredictable. Um. Obviously, we have to fold. Oh, what did I do? Ooh, god. No, I, I, I can't see this being a good, good call, let's see. This can't be a good call. This can't be a good call. 32% pot odds here. I, I, I feel like, I feel like if we jam here on the flop, we avoid this situation completely. Because now, because now what's he jamming with here? He's got, oh, he's got these flushes, he's got no straights. I mean, is he jamming with a set? Here, it's possible. Look at all this, two pair. Overpairs, he has no overpairs. I mean, is he really jamming a jack here when, when a club comes out? Highly doubt that. I highly doubt that, so he's not jamming top pair, he's not jamming any of this other stuff. Like, unless he's just completely spewy that he is completely bluffing here, and, and we're going to find out in a second. Is he jamming enough flush draw maybe? I mean, he could, I guess. He's not jamming a second enough flush draw. He's not jamming a second enough flush draw. So we got, like, when we eliminate all those hands, we have twelve percent equity. How in, why in the hell did I call this here? This is pretty bad. This is pretty bad. If I win this hand, it's completely lucky, and I never should have. Because again, this guy is a loose passive player. So that, so he's passive. I know we have an aggression factor four, which I don't, you know. I don't think so. I, this is pretty bad. See, this is the problem, is we win the hand, but we played it poorly. We played it poorly. And, listen, we should have folded here, but this is again, shows you why we should have jammed. We should have absolutely jammed on the flop here. And he would have, he would have paid us off. We get lucky, we made a terrible call. And I don't, I don't think anybody can, can deny the fact that we made a terrible call here. Um, we should have definitely just, going back to the flop here, I'm more convinced now more than ever, we should not be calling here. It's a two SPR pot, we have, we, we have top pair, we're committed, jam it. Instead of putting ourselves in this situation here where it's highly unlikely, he does it of course, but it's highly unlikely that he's doing that. He's got so much in his range that, that he's beating us here with. Uh, SPR, so, uh, Wanka, SPR is a stack the pot ratio. So the way that you calculate SPR, I'll go back to the flop here, is you take the effective stack, which the effective stack is the, um, smallest, uh, the, the smallest of the stacks here, so you got three stacks. And you take the small stack and you divide it by how much is in the pot. And that's the stack the pot ratio. So generally, in a stack the pot ratio, um, where it's three or less, you're really pot committed with a hand like top pair here. Um, and that's why really we should be, we should be jamming here and just getting it all in when he dunk bets us here. Um, so yeah, that, that's what SPR is. Um, now you're not pot committed if you don't have top pair. Um, but obviously, there's really no room because of the fact that it's such a low SPR, that for the most part, you're usually getting it all in versus a player like this. And I mean, the way he played was mind-boggling again because the stack size that he has, but again, he's, he's a recreational player, the stack size that he has here, um, you know, really should just be either a three bet shoving or folding here in a small blind. Anyway, let's move on to the next hand. I thought that was a pretty interesting hand. I think we played it poorly. I think we should have just shoved. Same outcome would have happened, but still, he, I mean, he definitely would have called. He's not, he's not folding, he's not folding his jack there. Uh, ten-seven here from the small blind. So we, uh, now with that win, we're, we're stacked up pretty good now. We got a M of thirty-one, which is nice. Um, it does fall to us here, so I think this, uh, this hand here. We're deep, we have a player here in front of us who's a middle stack player. We want to put pressure on these, on these players with these, uh, middle, middling stacks. He's not terrible, but he's getting, he's starting to get pretty low. Um, where he's gonna be starting to have some tougher, tougher decisions. Um, anything M-ten through, uh, twenty is like a middle stack. Now, M- fifteen through eighteen, you have a little bit more room to maneuver, you can three bat in these spots here. Uh, but we do want to start putting some pressure on him here. Um, and I think this hand is a candidate. Ten-seven offsuit is. So ten-seven offsuit is a hand. What's going on there, uh, Bud Raisin? I appreciate, uh, thank you so much. I appreciate the, uh, the compliment. Uh, so here, definitely want to open this up here. So we folded, um, I don't like that. Definitely should have, uh, gone for the steal here, so that was a mistake. Need to be opening up, uh, ten-six. And this guy's tight also. Um, he's a fourteen-eights, um, tight passive player. He's fold to steal, um, fold still stats is irrelevant, uh, but seventy-eight hands is tight passive. We definitely need to be opening up our ten-seven offsuit there. So we definitely missed an opportunity to grab some blinds and antis. Uh, ten-six offsuit here should definitely be a fold, especially to an open. Uh, jack seven here should be a fold. Pocket tens. Uh, pocket tens in, uh, under the gun. Uh, we're definitely going to be opening this up here, and we'll just take it down pre. Uh, here, we have nine-four suited in the big blind. Get a limp, so of course, we're just gonna take the option. Um, so we have backdoor flush draw, we have backdoor, backdoor straight draw here. At a position, a hand like this, we're not gonna really be fighting, um, fighting a pot four here. Looks like we had a table change, by the way. Looks like we have a different, um, a different loose passive player in front of us. I do remember this. I was so happy that we had it. I remember last night, yesterday when I was streaming this tournament, I was so happy that we got moved tables, and we just got another like loose passive player in front of us. And those are like the worst players I have in front of you is a loose passive player. It's really difficult to play versus them. Um, of course, it's, it's, it's difficult to play versus loose players when you have loose players, so you left them out of what, whether they're loose passive or loose aggressive. Uh, just puts you playing out of position versus them, a lot of, you know, a lot of the hands and, you know, it's difficult to be out of position versus players like that. Yeah, you remember that. Um, yeah, I was so excited and I was so upset. Uh, anyway, here, uh, this is just, we just check fold this here. I mean, even though this is a min bet, there's really no reason to be calling at a position, um, with a hand like this, and we folded up. Uh, six-two suited here in the small blind. Obviously easy fold. Queen four, uh, so queen four, we are still deep here, uh, but this would still be a fold here. Eight-two is an easy fold, of course. Queen two suited here from the, um, uh, middle position, it would be a folds. Ace-five suited here from under the gun, definitely an open. So we get a call from a, that loose passive player. And we got a pretty darn good board. So this is, this is definitely an interesting spot. I mean, we have, we have the board pretty darn dominated. Now, I really don't like slow playing. But, if we look at this player here, obviously small sample size, but we can, we can kind of think about this here. This player here has a really high fold to c-bet. Um, it's really doubtful that if we c-bet on this board, we're ever gonna get a call. So I think really, our best bet here is really just to check call this hand here. Um, uh, yeah, and you know, yeah, I mean, I, I don't think c-betting here is gonna make much sense because I don't think we're ever gonna get value from much of anything here. So, we do check and he bets and that's great. So the question is here, do we check raise here? I just don't, I don't, the min bet's annoying, right? We kind of wish that he put in like a real bet, and so it's definitely kind of annoying, but I guess we just call here. Um, obviously our hand is a little bit vulnerable. Because we have a flush potentially out there. The board is paired, so he could hit a full house, is always possible as well, um, you know, calling with, uh, with any kind of pocket pair. But I just don't think, I just don't think we were ever getting, um, like, I don't know, it's interesting. I don't know, honestly, he's, he's loose passive. Um, it's inter, it's inter, I don't, honestly, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question, but I don't think we need the three bet here, because I think when we three bet here, we're pretty much announcing, hey, we have an ace, right? We're telling them we have an ace. And the board is paired as well, which is not, or, or, or we're telling, or we're telling we have a full house, right? Because we, we, we could easily have sixes that we'd be opening up under the gun. So I don't think he ever could continue with a flush draw because the board is paired. Um, so that's another reason why I don't think we can really raise here. I think we gotta call it, and maybe depending on what the turn card is, maybe we could check raise the turn. I do check raise here, so I, I don't know. I, I, I don't love it. Now, the check raise is kind of small in relation to the pot. So, I mean, he could still call here. He's, he's getting seventeen percent to call, so it's not, you know, yeah, I agree, I, I agree Bud Raisin. I, I'd rather check call here. I don't like to check raise here. He actually calls, so, okay. Maybe he's calling with a pocket pair that he's gonna try and, and hopefully hit a set, uh, hit a full house with. I mean, if, if you look at it here though, if, he did get great odds to call, right? He had seventeen percent to call, so he can call with any of his flush draws here. Um, he's gonna have good odds to call. Obviously, if he has pair, uh, pocket pair, he can definitely call here too. So he had, so at least when we check raise it, we check raise it small in relation to the pot. That is good. I guess that's fine. Like, we don't want to like check, like, like check raise some ridiculous amount. At least we check raise it a small amount he can call with here, and we're still getting value from our aces here. Uh, king comes out. So if he did, obviously, now if he did have a flush, he's, a flush draw, he did hit the flush. Um, so I think we definitely do want to continue betting here. We don't, we definitely want to continue the aggression here. We don't want to back off now because a spade is hit. Um, because that's gonna put us in a really, really difficult spot when he bets. We bet and he raises, I think we could probably easily get out of this hand. Yeah, it most likely has some kind of pocket pair. Um, you know, again, this is a recreational player too. He's not thinking about pot odds, he's not thinking about what kind of price he's getting. He's basically thinking about his, his own two cards, which we have to remember as well. Um, you know, and also, this was, we were under the gun, he called from, from middle position. Um, so just to get an idea of what a range like that might look like, I mean, again, there's really not too many hands you'd want to call. Middle position versus under the gun. So it's gonna look something like this here. Um, so like the ranges that I, that I have, right? These, this is what we'd be calling. But this guy is, this guy is a fifty, a fifty percent VPIP. So actually, when you think about it that way, he's a fifty percent VPIP. Forget, forget about my ranges for a second. I mean, we, we don't have any three bets on him yet, but let's say he three bets like three percent of the time, right? Ace-king. I mean, he's still gonna have a bunch of pocket pairs, he's gonna have a bunch of flush draws as well. So. You call all day? What you mean with the, um, with, with you check call all day? I mean, yeah, I, I think the check raise is fine there because of the bet sizing, the bet sizing I did. I think if I would have checked raised a lot bigger, we definitely would have blown him off the hand, so. Um, alright, so here, I think we definitely have to continue betting. And I bet, um, I bet pretty big actually here. Um, I don't know about this bet sizing here. Oh, when he bets, turn you call. It just puts us in an awkward spot, so I, I definitely want to continue the aggression here. Definitely want to continue the aggression here. Um, I'm not sure I love the bet sizing here though, uh, because now we're folding out like all of his, we're folding out all of his, well, we don't know that, because this guy's a recreational player. We don't know what he's doing. Like to, to try and get in this guy's head and figure out like bet sizing and, and what he knows about bet sizing, I don't think he does, because again, this is a guy with, there's a fifty-zero VPIP, VPIP, uh, zero PFR. He might just literally be clicking buttons, you know, we don't know. It's hard to get in a player's head like this. Um, I don't like the best sizing though. And the reason why I don't like the best sizing is because now we're almost announcing that like we have a flush. And it's gonna be hard to keep a lot of worse hands in. I'd rather see me under bet here. And then if he raises, we could easily get out of the hand. Now we put ourselves in a position where we bet really big here, and he raises, we have to fold, and we just, we, we've, this is a pretty big bet for this situation, where we could definitely be behind here. I'd rather see myself under bet here, get value from still, from still some worse, worse hands. Keep in mind also, he could also have an ace, he could have a better raisin' us as well. Um, so, yeah, I'd rather have an, I'd rather under bet here. I don't like the sizing. Bet about a third pot here, I think is fine. He folds it up. So, you know, maybe he did have a pocket pair that if we under bet here, uh, we keep him in, so. I think, I think my thought process at the time was not, I don't think I thought clearly enough at the time, and if I would have, I, I would have definitely under bet here. Uh, pocket fours in the big blind. We're at the hundred fifty-three hundred level now, we have an M of twenty-seven. So we get that open limp here. This guy's of course gonna be open limping a ton. We'll take a look at his, you can see from his, from his pop-up here. I don't know how to, how to, oh, is this way? Okay. Uh, this guy's limping sixty-five, this guy's limping sixty-five percent of the time. Think about that. Sixty-five percent of the time, this guy is limping. He never open raises. Like literally, he, his range is like almost infinite in a way. Yeah, you know, I play like this in my home, I play with a guy like this in my home game, and it drives you nuts because literally, he could have like nine-two offsuit here. We have no idea. That, that's a little bit of a stretch, but, you know. Uh, yeah, I, I, I under bet a lot. I do under bet a lot, um, which I think is the proper way to go, um, especially if you're not going for value. Um, yeah, I, I, I think under betting, because we're playing short, is more so the right play because we're not committing too much of a stack. Um, and you can still under bet the flop and still get it in, uh, on the turn or the river, you know, and by under betting, you keep a lot of worse hands in, which is good. Yeah, when you bet, when you bet bigger, then you're folding out a lot of hands that, that you beat, especially, you know, especially in tournaments where, where everybody has, has smaller stacks, you know, and that's just me also thinking, coming from a, from a cash background. Um, you know, where two-third pot-sized bet, three-quarters is more standard. Uh, here, I think the under betting is definitely, um, definitely the better play. In a lot of situations, depending on, on, on stack size as well, and also the stack size of your opponent as well. Obviously, in a situation versus this particular guy where he's already short, you know, betting two-thirds pot is not gonna make much sense because that's pretty much, that's almost like his entire stack. Uh, anyway, so we get the open limp, which could be god knows what. And obviously, we'll just take the option here with the fours. We're not going to be isolating pocket fours in the big blind. We're just gonna look at the set here and get paid, and if not, so be it. And, um, this would just be an easy hand to get, get away from. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's just one of the key things is you never, you know, y, y, you really don't want to tighten somebody's range up, especially when you have like a marginal hand. You don't want to, you know, like if you, let's say you have something like second pair or something like that, you don't want, but, but you, you want to c-bet. You don't want to bet too big that it tightens your opponent's range and takes out a lot of the hands that you're beating, and only keeps in the hands that you're losing to. So that's why bet sizing is very important. Uh, ten-six offsuit here, obviously easy fold, small blind. Uh, five-four, we know we're not gonna be playing. Ace-six here in the cutoff. Uh, we have an M of twenty-six right now. Uh, obviously, we're gonna be opening this up here. And this guy jams. Oh, I remember, I remember this hand, and this is an interesting spot. I'm gonna throw this one to IceMizer actually. Because I'm very curious about this here. I, oh, I folded it. I thought I called this here. I saw, I'm pretty sure this should be a fold, but I'm gonna throw this to IceMizer. Let me just open up IceMizer real quick. Now this guy had an M of six. So, just, this is... I wasn't really sure what to do here, so I folded. And it's a twelve big blind, M of six is pretty, is pretty big. This guy also is fairly tight. Um, but he's in a small blind. As we mentioned, obviously this guy was probably, is probably a reg, knows that he should be three bet jamming, um, in the small, in the small blind. So it's an interesting spot. Um, so let's take a look here. Let me just grab the hand history from this one here. Uh, ace-four suited. No, ace-six suited. So we copy this here. Paste it in. Uh, we have chippy V here, is, which is, uh, what we want to be looking at. Um, and I calculate equilibrium, this is how I usually do it, calculate. And ace-six suited actually should be a call here. Um, well, I mean, do we think he's doing this with this big of a range here? And let's just even just give him. Let's give him like the suited aces that he may do this with here. I mean, he's a, he's a, he's a reg, so, I mean, he has reggish type stats. So, and he's got, and he's got twelve big blinds. I mean, he could do this, I guess, with all pocket pairs as well. I think this, I think this range seems fair. The suited kings, I don't think, I don't think queen-ten suited is doing this. King-queen off could be doing it as well. Um, alright, let's just take a look like based on a range like this. Oh, I didn't mean to do- Oh, I didn't mean to do that. Stupid. I just, I just undid what I just did. Idiot. Uh, had jack 10 suited, but I didn't have, I didn't have queen 10 suited. Okay. Don't press that button again. Fool. Calculate. Yep. Even, even still versus that range, ace six suited should be a call there. So I think we definitely missed an opportunity there. And also spots I need to, I, I, I need to be more aware of. Because I'm, I, I, I do miss opportunities like that, um, to, sure, we're, we're flipping. Um, but I miss opportunities like that to grab some, grab some chips and, and, um, increase my stack. So, uh, yeah, ace six suited should have been a call there. Uh, four, three, fold it. King seven here, uh, under the gun is a fold. Here we have king six in a small blind. We get the limp here again from Mr. Loose Passive. This isn't, I hope not. Okay, good. I don't think that, that stupid jam is in this particular, I, I, this clearly, obviously this is a fault here. Yeah. I didn't want to, I hope that, I hope that, I didn't want to talk about it. But the dumbest play I made last night. Uh, this guy, so okay, so he's got an M and nine, it was passive. So I don't think like, obviously we can't really steal versus him, right? He's calling everything. He's got a really small fold to steal. So we can't even play, we can't play a hand like this. Now I'm just curious, um, versus a normal player. Uh, nine, six off is a fold anyway. So, but obviously if he's like, if we have a player who's, who's tight and is folding a ton of steals, we can open up a hand like nine, six, uh, nine, six offsuit. But obviously not versus this guy. Uh, queen five should be a fold, of course, right here. Queen nine suited. Again, we're still deep. Uh, we get to open here from under the gun. I think cutoff here, this is going to just be in a fold. Under the gun has got an M of 14. So he's a kind of in the middle here. So we really want to look at this like based on his stack size, not our stack size. And cut off versus the gun, uh, queen nine suited is a, is a fold. Six, two, fold this up. Uh, king five here, uh, it's going to be a fold, of course. Ace five suited. As always, he's, he's open limping. Well, he's limping 65% of the time. So. I don't even know if I have open limping here. Probably not. I mean, this is just a generic, uh, this is just a generic, I haven't, I, I need to make my own pop ups with what I want to see, but that's beside the point. Uh, all right. Ah, yes, yes, yes. This one we're going to throw into ice mizer two. I remember this hand. This guy's got big blind 13, M of six, and I do remember that I did call it here. I called it based on my power number chart, which says that this guy here with an M of six, uh, shoving with four people in front of him. And a hand like ace five suited. So. Ace five suited should be a call here. Now let me just double check this one here in ice mizer. So let's grab the ace five suited hand. Did I miss it? All right, here it is. Let's throw this one into ice mizer. Now let's just take a quick look first at the Nash equilibrium. Ace five suited. New, it says no, it says no, don't do it. Maybe because, um, this guy limps in, we wouldn't be calling. Maybe if this guy didn't limp. I just, I'm just curious here. This guy folded. Do we call now? Yeah. So wow, that's interesting. So the under the gun limp actually makes us a fold because we got the guy behind us. Very interesting. That's really interesting. That's, that, that's, I love that. I love the fact that we just figured that out. So there you go. And that's why me looking at my chart there is actually, I could disregard it because of the fact that this guy limped. I don't know. It's a look, I trust ice mizer and ice mizer just said it. So I mean, I should, I, I see a mizer is like, is the bomb. And when I see a mizer, all of a sudden I take out the limper and I can call this? Well, I mean, cause think about it. Like if that guy calls, now we got, now we gotta, all right. So this is the one thing about multi-way pots that you have to remember. Well, since he fight, he's, he's limping, he's limping everything. All right. Here, this, this is what you gotta remember. All right. This is very important to remember about multi-way pots is that when you are in a multi-way pot, that decreases your chance of winning. So obviously if you have three people in the pot, you now only have a 33% chance of winning. If you've got four people in the pot, you only have 25% chance of winning. So now if the limper is in there and the limper decides to call too, he only has, keep in mind, the limper only has 12 big blinds. He's short too. He could easily call that. He's getting amazing odds to call and be involved in this all in. So with each person that is in this pot, you now have a lesser chance of winning. So that's why I think with the limper in here. So we bring back his, his limp, right? Which was what? Uh, 300? With the limper in there, it changes everything. Because now our odds of winning with ace five suited, if he should happen to call is is not good. So. Yeah, very interesting. Cool stuff. I like it. I like it. Yeah. Isn't that awesome? It's up there. One, one decent 0888. He had a power study. So bad call because this guy's in it, but if he's not in this pot, easy call. And I looked at my chart. I said, okay, ace five suited is supposed to be a call verse here, but obviously our chart doesn't keep, doesn't know the fact that, um, that the under the gun opened limped. He folds, of course. And, uh, we were up against ace king, no big deal, whatever. That, that, this is, this, this doesn't matter. The fact that we lost this doesn't matter. Uh, what matters is the fact that we should have been out of this sphere because we're flipping anyway. Jack two folds up. Eight, two. Jack five, uh, jack four, five, four. Eight, six, uh, queen 10 offsuit. And obviously limp. And then we got the, uh, we got the pretty big isolation errors, easy fold with queen 10. Jack three, uh, king six offsuit here. We have an M of 12 right now. So we're getting, we're, we're starting to, uh, we're starting to get to a point where our stack is starting to get a little, is starting to dwindle here. Uh, obviously we folding out here. Six, four. 10, seven. Uh, five, four here, and we are under the gun. Obviously we're not playing that. King two suited. Uh, again, I mean, like this has been the entire, the entire session, right? Uh, we do flop well though, which is good. We do have a, we do have a, the second off flush draw. That's nice. So I'm wondering this spot here, I should prob, I wonder if I could just, I should just like lead out here, uh, considering that even though we're at a position, um, just to get some folds. I don't know. Ghost check, check. Um, I, I definitely think we should bet here though. And we'll take it down. Uh, ace, queen. Obviously, uh, we have an M of 13 here. So this is a spot that, um, I went over last night in my videos because I didn't really know how to play this spot yet with an M of 13. Obviously the question is like, do we, do we three out or do we three bet shove? The answer actually is with, with a stack like this, we should just be three betting and not three bet shoving. Let's see what I did here. Of course there has to be an open in front of us. So there isn't. So it's a moot point, but if somebody had open in front of us, um, we would be three betting, obviously, you know, depends on the player too, but with a hand like ace queen, obviously we're always three betting. It's one of the best hands we could have. We open it up, of course. Expect this guy to call because I mean, he's a VP of 50. I mean, there's not many two hands he doesn't like. And here we get a good flop. So see this is a spot here, super dry board, um, that I'm definitely going to under bet here because if I bet two thirds pot, like, like we're just like, he's going to be folding a lot. I mean, he already has a high fold to see bet as, as it is. Um, we could even, we could even check this hand here, but we've seen when we check hands, he just fricking bets like min, like min bets. So we definitely want to get value here. Uh, so we throw out the under bet, which I'm happy with. And we take it down. I, I mean, we're not getting many calls on this board anyway. So I mean, not much we can really do. Uh, we're five handed now. Uh, we have, we have M of 15. So it's still somewhere in the middle. Yeah. Again, these hands here just sucks when you have a guy in front of you, you cannot like this, you can't even try and steal. Uh, king five offsuit. Uh, falls to us here. We have an M of 11 now. So now we're really, like, we're really getting into that kind of like yucky area. Still, it's not terrible though. We're still like a lower end middle stack now. Um, a hand like king five offsuit with this stack size. Uh, should be a fold here. And we do. And we got pocket tens. Uh, definitely going to be opening this up here. Get a call, of course. We've always added position hands we had to deal with during this session. It was a nightmare. Uh, so this is one of those weird spots, right? We got for the most part, this is a pretty dry board. Sure, there are two diamonds out there, but it's not very connected. We could, I, like, we could see bet here or we can just check call. Um, I think, I think I would rather check call here than, than see bet. The board is kind of dry. Um, we know he folds out a lot of hands here. He could end up betting with, I mean, he could have a jack, but he could end up just taking a stab with a, a huge part of his range. Um, flush draws maybe even maybe, you know, so. I do see bet here. I do want, but I under bet at least. So when I do see bet, at least you under bet is fine too. And he does call it. So I mean, he could obviously have a jack here. He could have a flush draw. He could have any pocket pair here is quite possible. Two comes out. Uh, this time I decided to check, of course, which is, is definitely the right play because you know, we could definitely be behind here. Um, we could definitely be behind here versus Jack. So we definitely do not want to be betting here, but we definitely do want to check call. Second pair. Uh, he checks back here. So now we feel pretty confident that we're ahead. Ace comes out. Not very happy about this, of course. Uh, at this point now, if we check, he's a loose passive player and he bets, we got to fold our tens here. And goes check, check, and, uh, we take it down. God knows what he had. Uh, so we got ace two suited, M of 14. We open it up. Now we just take it down. Uh, king three, where are we? We're in the big blind here. Uh, so we're folding this up. Uh, king five here again, we're never stealing versus this guy. He only has, oh, he's, he's very short now. He only has four big blinds. So actually, let's take a look. Does it fold around to us? Nope. I mean, versus this, we're, we're, we're stealing a lot. We're, we're, we're going to just shove blind versus blind here versus stack depth. A lot. Uh, ace jack suited. Obviously we're opening this up here from the cutoff. Get the call as always. Uh, so he must've busted out and then he probably rebought again, as you can see, because now he has a stack again. Should remember this. Um, this guy folds a ton of see bets. I think this is actually a really good board for us to see bet here. Granted, we don't really have anything. We don't have any draws or nothing. But these monotone boards players are a lot of, are pretty scared of. And, uh, a guy who folds to see bets a lot, I think we just want to bet here. And I think we can bet even on the bigger side to even represent a flush here, uh, half pot, two thirds size pot bet here. I don't think we want to under bet here. Even though an under bet would work too. So I do under bet. Um, I'm in bet this. We get a call. Was I not paying attention to my bet sizing yesterday? I think, you know what? Yeah, there's something wrong with my, there's definitely something wrong with my bet sizing here because I, because this, this is the, this is a min bet. Uh, we do get top pair now, but obviously we're worried about it. Like, I don't think it's a flush, right? A flush would definitely raise. Raise a flop. I bet really small now. This is like a, I just really don't feel like betting anymore, but but I, but I have to, but I feel like I have to because I could get bluff off of my ace here. And we hit two pair. Oh, I remember this hand. Yeah, we fold. Yeah. I mean, like what's he raising with here? I mean, the fact that he calls this monotone board. I mean, he could be calling, he could just be fricking slow playing a flush here is quite possible. He's not, he's not scared of the ace. Unless he races and we were going to be chopping. I don't know. I mean, clearly the fold is the right play. We can't, we can't call there, but I don't know what he could have been doing that with. Cause what, what? Oh, we're getting three to one call. But it's like, it's almost our entire stack though. We'd be pretty much like just all in at that point. Yeah, we can't call that. Uh, queen seven fold. King five. We have an M of eight now, 17 big blinds. So we are getting pretty short here. King two here. I don't think we'd obviously only to a limp. We're in a three-way pot with king two offsuit. Obviously I mean, nothing's going to happen here. Uh, king four here from the, uh, under the guns, going to be in a fold, seven, two. I'm sorry, that was under the gun. That was, uh, small blind. Okay, so king four suited here. I'm going to look at my chart on this one here. King four suited here. I think should be a jam. Yeah. Uh, with an M of eight, king four suited should definitely be a jam here, blind versus blind. I don't like that. I don't know. Let's see, let's just sort of indyce mizer real quick. I think, I think I should just be jamming this here though. I know we have 16 big blinds, but I mean, he's got an M of 14. He's never going to want, like, if he calls us here, he's committing half of this stack. We should get a ton of folds here from this player, you know, who has a middling stack at this point, where I think we should just be jamming it here. Especially versus a player who's calling a ton. You know, we know we, we open raise, we're not getting a steal versus them there. I don't, I don't think I agree with this at all. Let's just run this one on ice mizer. King five suited, or king four, was that king four suited? Yeah, king four suited. Which looks like this hand was a complete disaster, but that was just bumped us in here. They have him calling with 34% of his range. So yeah, king four suited is supposed to be a jam here. So, yeah, I mean, definitely missed an opportunity here. We need to, I, I think we definitely need to jam here, blind versus blind with his, like with his stack size, you know? Where we have so much, we have so much fold equity here. I know this guy's like a, like a loose passive player, but I don't see him calling, like calling the, calling a jam there. Um, he's going to be committing like half of his stack to call a jam there. And look, if he calls a jam there and he has like a monster hand, then so be it. But, um, you know, we have so much fold equity versus stack size here. It's half of a stack. We have to jam there. So I, I don't like that. I don't like this. This is, this is a waste of time right now. Like folded it. Like if I'm going to do this, just fold. I mean, this is a waste of time. It's a, it's just a waste. Uh, God, oh, God, this is the hand. This is the hand. Why is this part of this tournament? Oh God, this is the worst hand ever. All right. I apologize for what you're about to see. This is that bluff I did and it made no sense at all. Made no sense at all. So first of all, I mean, I could probably see bet on this board. I could probably see, see bet in this board. It's so dry. Nine, 10 is calling. Any seven is calling, any jack is calling. Queen, queen 10, hands like that, of course, the gut shots. They're calling. Other than that, a ton of hands are folding here. So I check, I should just see bet this. If I'm going to make, do such a stupid play like open raises. And then he, and then he min bets. Oh God. Yeah. I remember, I just clicked the button. I remember what I did. I jammed here. Well, you, Wanka, were you here, were you, were you at, on this, watching on the stream when I did this crap? And like, I said, why did I just do that? Why didn't I do that? It was the dumbest play. I have no explanation except for just. Why didn't I do that? It was the dumbest play. I have no explanation except for just, this is a complete spew. And he, that's right, he, he had two pair of jack seven. But, I mean, so if I jam, if I jam here. Do you think he's calling with jacks? Do you think he's committing half of his stack with jack seven suited? I doubt it. Maybe he is, I don't know. Yeah, well, I almost vomited, I think, when I did this. This is terrible. Um, yeah, this, this is just horrendous. I almost got lucky. But the funny thing is, I almost got lucky there. And then I maybe would have thought it was a good play, but it was not a good play. Um. Uh, he has jack seven. I mean, again, this could be avoided just by jamming on uh, jamming pre-flop. And look, if he calls with jack seven suited, he sucks out on us, so be it. The correct play here is a jam, king four suited. Alright, seven, two. So, and then, I think I was, I, I, like, I don't know if you noticed, Wonka, but I think I was getting a little tilted yesterday. I think I was getting a little bit tilted yesterday. And so then hap- haphazardly, I did another double re-buy. Like, so in this tournament, I did two double rebuy. I, yeah, so I, and this is something I'm gonna stop doing. And we'll talk about it in my next stream. Uh, I'm gonna stop doing this. I'm putting way too much money into these tournaments, um, with these rebuys. I'm over rebuying in these tournaments. Um, and I need to kind of relax. I think, I think I need to scale it back a little bit. This was terrible. This, I mean, like, we don't want to talk about how much money I lost yesterday, just like all these rebuys. It wasn't good. So, I'm kind of glad we looked at this tournament, actually. Obviously, we're folding here. And look, and here's the problem with this rebuy, by the way. I did a, I did a double rebuy. I did a double rebuy. We were right towards the uh, getting near the add-on at this point. Because remember, I said, I'm gonna double rebuy and then I'm gonna add on. Remember? Yeah, well, I think, well, that's actually what I'm gonna start looking at, uh, Wonka. That's what I'm gonna start looking at, is when it comes time, if I'm getting low, to start looking at what that min cash is. Now, um. Here, if you take a look, I rebought. I only have an M of 10. I only have 20 big blinds. This is a horrendous rebuy. And this was a double rebuy. I double rebought in this one. Horrendous. You know, when I lose that hand on that, but I, I remember what I was thinking. I was like, oh, my god, I played such a stupid hand. The way I played that hand so stupid, I had to rebuy. It was total, like, it, it was definitely, there was definitely a little bit of tilt there. And not even think about the fact that when I did that double rebuy, I'm double rebuying. Short. I have 20 big blinds. That was terrible. Five, five buy-ins on this tournament. Dumb. Not worth it. Not worth it. So anyway. I think we're almost done with this tournament, because I think we can bust that again real quick. Uh, alright, obviously, um, we're opening up here. What happened here? Did we miss a hand here somehow? I guess we must have missed a hand, something, did we? Oh, 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 then, then it was the add-on, right? So then we immediately, also, we did, we did put in, we did put in six buy-ins because then we added on too. We did the, we did the two double rebuy, then we added on. Boy, I wasn't desperate for first, because I spent like $25 on this fricking $3 tournament, or whatever it was. Did I spend $25 about? About that, right? Six, yeah, about $25 because, because BetOnline charges rake on the rebuys too, which is terrible, by the way. Yeah, right, right, exactly, exactly, Wonka. Just terrible. I, I spewed. I spewed yesterday. And then we added on. So, then we added on. So anyway, yeah, we're opening up king jack here, of course. So we continue, we continue. Especially with these guys in front of me. Why do I want to continue playing at a table versus fricking loose passive player in front of me? Please tell me that. Please tell me that. Dumb, stupid. Stupid. Uh, we have a, this is, this is a weird board, right? This guy folds a lot. This is, this is a great spot, I think, to c bet here. Uh, we check it. I, I, maybe I didn't look at this guy's fold to c bet at all, but. We missed a spot here and then we gotta fold. Yeah, he'll pay off. He'll, he'll, he'll pay off if we play him correctly, but we played, we played versus him terribly. We played versus him awful. I don't think we played well versus him at all. It's still, it's just annoying having, like, having him, like, when we're buttoned, it's great, but. Only when we're buttoned. Every time we're out of position versus him, it drives us nuts. No, we never talked about fold to c bet yesterday. We never did. We never did. And I think we should have, because even though, again, it's a small sample size, it's, it's decent enough. Eight out of 10 pretty much means that he's folding. He's folding a lot of, like, but he's gonna be folding a lot, right? Because he has a Vp of 50. Through 144 hands, which is significant. So. Of course, he's gonna be folding a lot because his range is ridiculous. His range is huge. Alright, nine eight, we're gonna fold this up here. Uh, here in the big blinds. Wow, he actually found a hand that he didn't uh, open limp with. That's amazing. Let me easily fold this here. Uh, small blinds. Again, I think we just want to play tight versus this guy because he's never folding. So I don't think we want to, I don't think we want to bet here. I don't like it at all. This guy's never folding. Um, now we gotta play ace three offsuit out of position is horrendous. Yeah, right. Oh, yeah. Yeah, this guy, right, exactly. He opened limbs and then this guy's 558. I, I noticed that too. Yeah, because he, because he has such a ridiculous range. Um, so I don't like this here because, again, we're just not getting, he's never folding. And now we gotta play ace three offsuit out of position. It's not fun. And then again, and, and, and if you notice, by the way, I don't know if we have uh, float bets here. I don't think so. I don't think float bets are. On this pop-up. But if I had to guess, this guy is like a really, really large float bet. If you're not aware what a float bet is, you know, um, a float bet. You've heard float bet, I'm sure, where, where people like call with like a, something like that, but uh, the other definition of float bet is uh, from, from what PokerTracker has as float bet. Is if we had a pre-flop razor and we opt, and, and we're out of position and we opt not to c bet, and then our opponent. Bets, that's called a float bet. Uh, basically, they're taking a stab at the pot to take it down. Um, you could actually get a lot of folds, um, using, using float bets. Um, now, this guy's floating a ton, but he's floating. I mean, this is 600. What are the blinds? I mean, he's floating, he's floating betting 600 and what, and. Oh, no, okay, this is 600. Yeah, okay, he's, he's floating betting min, min bet. Anyway, whatever. Well, that's also something that I'm thinking of, that I, I'm, I'm gonna implement in my next, my next session, is uh, 2.5x open from the small blind. Uh, I'm running out of time here. I gotta actually get going pretty soon. How many more hands we got here? I'm kind of running out. I don't think I'm gonna be able to finish this tournament up. Alright, we gotta actually start wrapping this up here because I gotta go pick up my kids. I gotta go, I gotta go pick up my, my girls, I think. Nine o'clock? I think it's the correct time. Let me just, let me just confirm with my girls that nine o'clock is the correct time. They weren't sure if it was gonna be nine or 10 o'clock. Text them, we'll find out what, what time it actually is. I hope so. No, I thought it was 10, I thought it was 10 too, but they said 10, but then they changed it to nine. They never know. My, my girls never know. They're like a wealth of misinformation. They're a wealth of misinformation. And it's fricking cold out. I'm sure it's cold up by you too. It's fricking like six degrees outside right now. It's insane. Uh, alright, so we open up king queen offsuit here. Let's just try and fly through these here. A loose passive guy. Um, here, I mean, we definitely gotta be c betting here. In position. Uh, we under bet here. We take it down. Oh, you're in New Mexico. Why did I think you were in Michigan? I don't know why. That's right, that's right. You're from Michigan. Now you live in New Mexico. I know, because he folded to a c bet. He folded to a c bet, that's why. We know he does that. Uh, here we open. Ah, he folded pre-flop. He must have realized trash. What kind of hands is he folding here? Alright, so solid, solid here. We definitely want to c bet. This guy, uh, this guy donks into us here. Um. We could raise him here, but I don't think raising really makes, makes much sense. Uh, so I think we just call his, his min dunk bet. The play yesterday, like, wow, we played on Global Poker yesterday? We're playing on BetOnline? I don't know. It's almost feeling like global yesterday here. Oh, god, yeah, this is terrible. You're right, Bud Racing. Five is awful. Six is terrible. I don't know what's going on. Florida's like 30. He might have jack, jack and folded. Yeah, jacks, who likes to play jacks, right? Uh, should we just keep on calling here? We got a pair and he's gonna call, I mean. This guy's doing it with nothing. Pair twos. Uh, we never want to raise there, you know? Just call, call, call. I mean, we could raise, I guess we could raise, I guess we could raise the river here. But I mean, what's calling us anyway? I guess we could raise the river here at this point, just for value. We should be ahead most of the time here. It's probably not a call, though. Uh. But I mean, I don't see any reason not to, not to raise there. Uh. This is like a two, this is a, like a 2.5x open. Uh, ace eight suited. We have an M of 16. They say come now. Alright, this is gonna be the last hand because they're actually ready to be picked up, and I would love to pick them up now, so maybe I can play a tournament tonight. So let's go through this last hand here. Um. Ace eight suited. Uh, actually, I believe it's probably gonna be a fold. Yeah, this is the fold here. Let's just get one more hand in. They could wait two seconds, right, these kids? They could wait a couple of minutes? They make me wait all the time. Alright, here. Pocket two. Pocket twos. Yeah, we'll, we'll do this one here. Pocket twos. We, we need a post-flop hand. Alright, we're gonna, we're gonna get a post-flop hand of this guy, right? Ah, we go multi-way. So twos multi-way sucks, of course. It's not a great hand to look at. So this is a spot here, actually, I think I should have c bet, by the way. Um, and I think I mentioned this on stream yesterday. I should have definitely c bet here. Um, try and take it down right now. My pocket twos, you know, multi-way. Uh, we had a pre-flop aggressor, we're in position. I should have definitely c bet here. We could definitely get folds from these guys. So this was a missed opportunity to take down a pot. Now it's, now we're done here. You know, look at this guy folded. So I think we definitely should have, um, definitely, we should have c bet there. We missed an opportunity with our twos in position, so. Alright, guys, this was fricking awesome. I appreciate you guys. Uh, yeah, I'm, thank you so much, Bud Racing, Wonka Wins coming by, everybody else who stopped by and checked out the stream. I appreciate it. I haven't done one of these study streams in quite a long time, and uh, they're a lot of fun. Um, I am gonna be posting this up on YouTube as well, uh, in a couple of days. So if you guys aren't, follow me on YouTube. Please do so. Subscribe there. Uh, youtube.com/pokerdad. Uh, follow me on Twitter at pokerdad28, so you get notifications when I'm doing things like this or when I'm having my normal streams. Um. What else? Uh, this, uh, join the Discord. You can get the link uh, below my channel here, all my other social media. I guess all that stuff's over, always over there. Um, click the follow button here if you haven't followed here yet. Please do so because you'll find out when I'm streaming. Uh, I stream four days a week. And uh, yeah, that's it. I'm gonna go pick up my kids. I'm gonna go outside to the freezing cold. I'm really excited. Uh, and yeah. Until next time, poker dad. Out.